Probably best to talk to the commission in closed session about that. I just don't want to shoot from the hip and say anything inaccurate. But we'll look into those concerns and I'll talk to the manager about it.
Okay. And a long time ago, we had plans in place to deal with emergencies. We'd worked with the conference center to use the Assembly Inn and some other issues to take care of the town when we had a disaster. And so, we've had a disaster now. And your plans going forward, I'm sure you'll share with the town. But one of the things that we did, I think it was Y2K, we all had to take a course so that we could be part of a command center. And I wondered if that is something you all have done? Or... No? Okay. And the last, there's a comment. Over the last few years, we've had a lot of, not a lot, we've had several lawsuits that have dealt with the Board of Adjustment. And I wondered if the Board of Adjustment has had the course that's provided by the League of Municipalities?
We've had attorneys sit with the Board of Adjustments to make sure that we don't make any legal errors.
Okay. But the courses are really helpful, so if you would encourage them to attend some of those. For planning and zoning, for all the commissions that you've got.
Turn the microphone more towards your face. There you go.
Sorry. You know me and my voice, I'm sorry. But it's, they're just really good courses from the League, and I would hope that the boards and commissions would take advantage of all of those. Thanks.
Thank you.
I believe Kayla did some extensive training at the Board of Adjustment. Now, Brandon, you might, but we did actually in-house, in-person, training, and I got George raising his hand there. I don't think there's been any lack of training, and I appreciate letting, bringing it up, because it is very important. But one of the things that Kayla did bring to us was a substantial amount of training of that group.
Good afternoon, Wade Burns, 779 Foreman Siding Road, Montreat ETJ. Regarding Letta Jean's question, my understanding is the only expenditure the town had in regard to the Hamilton lawsuit against the town for giving us the permits that we built the house was they had, is a law firm appear in September of one of the years, we were in Superior Court, just to tell the judge that the town would not be participating in the defense of the suit against the town. And so, we bore all the legal expenses of that lawsuit. And I did want to say that I think we have an opportunity that maybe we can help each other right now. Our application for conditional zoning to try and remedy and recover those permits will take place whenever it can. We'd hoped to get on the July agenda of the Planning and Zoning Commission, who have to go first, but that didn't happen. We were hoping to get a special call meeting between now and when they meet in October. And I understand that the town attorneys advised that, because the Planning and Zoning Commission has subcommittee meetings going on, that those need to run their course, and that perhaps our application to the Planning and Zoning Commission will be in October. The things that the Planning and Zoning is looking at is hillside development and the sign ordinance, and then understand some, a new look at flood control. I was on the hillside committee in the four years I was on the council, and we never got any recommendations, and it's been a few years since, and still work on getting that The new item that's on is flood. And that's very relevant to the case that we're going to present to you about our house and the construction of it. Stormwater management is complicated. It's physics, it's math, and it's the force of nature. I have a great deal of experience in stormwater. The deadliest hurricane in the country in 1954 was in North Carolina, it was Hurricane Hazel. And when the floodwaters reached our yard, I was nine years old, I went swimming. I had no idea the risk involved, and swam a few hundred yards to a friend's house, answering the question, doesn't happen because of here I stand. But then my father took a church on an island, that's on the coast of North Carolina, Rachel Beach, and we evacuated for four hurricanes. I was here when the double hurricanes hit in '04. I watched what happened to the dam and so forth. I was here when Calvin Trail was wiped out. I had a job there, there was a track hole for my contractors on the campground site, so they were able to get there and work on those culverts. And then when we built our house, and there was the issue of my femoral stream being a risk, I made a project out of that. And it was 61 years ago that I entered the College of Architecture and Urban Studies. And my whole 60 years plus has been in architecture and planning. And so, I built, at the cost of over a million dollars, a demonstration project, how to manage stormwater in a particular circumstance. And so, when I come before you and it's time for you to look at what we did and what's existing, measures we took, then we'll go through each of those many steps. But as Planning and Zoning is now looking at flood, I think it would be helpful if maybe we could accelerate our case, where Planning and Zoning can put the time in to look into what we did, because it would be helpful. We managed to redirect the water, we managed to control what happened when it was redirected, we managed to get it into natural wooded area, we managed to prevent any damage to the neighbor's property or to the town with extraordinary steps that we took. And the details of all that would be, you know, at appropriate time. So, I ask for two things. One, that you consider perhaps, and the chairman of Planning and Zoning is here tonight, whether or not it might be appropriate to schedule the special meeting. When we were all together on the Planning and Zoning Commission, we met every month when we made the decision to go to quarterly, because we didn't have that much to do. And, but since these things are important, and in hurricane season right now, I think it could be advantageous, we're certainly prepared to go forward, to meet with the Planning and Zoning Commission, and what will be required is we need to look and understand everything we did. And it's science, and it's math, and it's engineering. And so, it could help us both. It could help the town in its understanding of things that can work and did work, things that don't work, and so forth. And hopefully, I can help you all, and that'll help us as well. Thank you for your time.
Wade, we don't control the Planning and Zoning's agenda, so if you want to get it moved up, you're going to need to talk to them. Okay? We don't control their agenda, do we Savannah?
Well, I understand that.
Well, you said if they could move it up, I can't move it up. You need to talk to them about moving it up.
Right. I have reached out to do, I have not talked to the chair of Planning and Zoning, but as the town attorney advised your zoning administrator to put off our case until at least October. This is my only chance to say that in front of the town attorney.
Okay, that's fine, as long as you've done that. Thanks Wade.
Okay, thank you.
Wade, can I ask you a question? I've never fully understood all the back and forth, and while all that was going on, you continued to build your house. Where do you stand now? I mean, do you have a certificate of occupancy?
We received all permits, grading, erosion control, zoning compliance, building permits, variance approvals, and stream determinations by Deaner, Septic, by the Department of Health, before we began construction. So, we began construction with all permits. The town was sued for giving us the permits. Planning and Board of Justice was sued for giving us variance. And the, our neighbor, you know, wrote to you not to sell Wade Burns Water. And y'all voted to let us buy water from him.
Wade, you should have been a politician. Do you have a certificate of occupancy? Yes or no?
We had one up until the court date.
Okay.
It's still, I don't know what it's, the town attorney might tell you what the status is. We have been legally occupying our house since August of two years ago. The judge's order is that all of our permits be vacated. And so, we of course came, borrowed against the house, we couldn't sell our house or anything else, until this gets resolved. It's a bit of a Damocles sword over us. But I'm assuming that as long as this thing's not resolved, the house is not destroyed yet.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I answer your question?
I think so.
Okay. Okay, if no one else has anything, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn until six o'clock, our regular meeting starts.
Someone?
I have a motion from Commissioner Fu, I mean Mayor Pro Tem Fouché. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second from Commissioner Dasher. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes carry. We stand adjourned until six o'clock.
Ladies and gentlemen, it's six o'clock, and we'll start the meeting. If everyone would please stand, face the flag, and let's say together the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioners, you have the agenda in front of you, and you've had it for a week or so. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
Mayor, can we make one slight change to the agenda, please?
Absolutely.
Can we just amend the agenda item? Let's see, if we're going to amend the closed session, we'll just amend that motion to say move to enter into closed session accordance with North Carolina General Statute 143-31811 for discussion of a personnel matter, and discussion of existing litigation, specifically Hamilton v. Burns pending in the North Carolina Court of Appeals.
Okay, you have a suggested change to the motion, I mean to the agenda. Do I have a motion to make that change?
I move.
I have a motion from Commissioner Alexander to add that to the closed session. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a second from Commissioner Dasher. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Now, I need a motion to adopt the agenda as amended. I have a motion from Commissioner Widmer to adopt the agenda as amended, and a second from Commissioner Alexander. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes carry. I really don't have a lot of communication tonight to share. We're still going through the rebuilding phase, slowly but surely. We're still going through the rebuilding phase slowly but surely over the next four or five years, we'll probably get it all done or close to all done. But staff continues to work long, hard hours in trying to get the money that we need to do all the things that we need to do, and our maintenance crew is continuing to do a lot of work themselves. Savannah, you want to cover the consent agenda in your communication?
I will. So on our consent agenda this evening, we have the July 10th public forum meeting minutes and the July 10th town council meeting minutes. And then for my communications, I am actually going to invite Chief Eaton up to take my communication spot for chief's communications.
Okay. Savannah would like me to discuss bear encounters and what to do if you encounter a bear. And I am not a bear expert, but I have dealt with bears growing up in western North Carolina and dealing with them at several law enforcement encounters. So the best thing I can tell you is when you interact with a bear, the last thing you want to do is run, okay? You don't want to run from a bear, they're going to attack you. You want to, you know, act big, be loud, make noise. If you can back away, slowly get away, seek shelter, do that. As far as interacting with bears, okay, if there is a bear trying to gain access to your house or you're in a life-threatening situation, call 911. When you're speaking with 911, make sure that you insist that you need an officer dispatch and you want to meet with an officer. We've had communication with them to resolve that issue, but we're one of the few agencies probably in the county that law enforcement usually responds to those type incidents. They're usually referred to wildlife. But we do have a little bit of a unique sort of bear mecca or sanctuary in Montry, and we don't have some of the natural things that harass bears like traffic. You know, our speed limits are low, so it doesn't scare the bears. We have a lot of food sources for bears and bears aren't scared, and as they stay in that environment, they get very used to people, and that's dangerous. And they need to be scared of people. And those are some of the things we can work on. I spoke to a couple commissioners about it, but it's something to discuss. But essentially, when you encounter a bear, you know, again, don't run, don't take selfies, don't approach the bear, get in your car. If you're in your car, you know, use your horn, you know, rev your engine a little bit, move away from the area. But you want to do anything that can make yourself appear bigger or louder with a bear. Your homes, you know, I know some folks do not have air conditioning, but if your doors or windows are open, a bear's going to come around. If you're feeding birds, the bear's going to come around. If a bear is successful at your house, it's going to return. It's not a matter of when, it's going to return. It's scored, it's going to come back. So you really need to, you know, speak with us or wildlife about what some of the measures you could do to mitigate that. So call the Montry Police Department either through 911, Buncombe County Communications, 828-250-6670, or you can call the town line and press six for an officer, seven for the chief. But I want you to understand cellphone service here is very unreliable. There's usually only one officer working, so they may be on a call and they're not going to answer you. That's not a very effective way to make contact with the officer. So that's why we encourage the other processes. Do you want to have any questions?
Jeff, I've had a number of people talk about how brave the bears are getting, and they're not backing off, and they're standing up, and I've heard of a couple of people that have been growled at with no, you know, they're not initiating anything, they just run upon these bears and they're... So I don't, at what point do we do something about it?
Well, I think that it's way past time to do something about it. I think that, again, we have to look at what do we do that makes it such a happy place for the bears? And, you know, it's a unique and interesting place because we'll get calls with folks complaining about barking dogs, okay? Dogs usually bark for a reason, right? They're barking because there's someone outside your house, there's a bear in your yard, you know? And dogs barking scare bears away. They don't want to mess with dogs, okay? But we have a bear population, but we, you know, we don't allow hunting and we discourage the hunters that want to train their bear dogs. So that's a problem. It's like we do everything, we, I hear, I hear people where they're talking about gossip that folks are feeding the bears, but they don't call and report that. But yet they seem to ask, think we should have some kind of response. Well, again, you know, we have this thing, the Constitution, you know, we can't go around peeking in people's windows or in their yards, but if your land is affixed where you're seeing the activity, call and report it. And then we have, you're building that reasonable suspicion, the probable cause to investigate, to do something about it, if that makes sense. You know, law enforcement itself doesn't necessarily have a solution to that, but I know, you know, wildlife has made recommendations, and I don't know that we've chosen to follow all of those recommendations. If that makes sense.
Thank you, Chief. One of the problems that the chief deals with is that people will call, some people call me and tell me about an incident, and I call the chief in Savannah and tell them about the incident. It's after the fact. If someone feels threatened, dial 911. If you just encounter a bear and see it up the street, there's no need to call. But if the bear is threatening you or you feel threatened by the bear, call 911. Then the police can do something, and they have a record of this aggressive bear in a particular neighborhood or whatever. So give them a break, they can't do anything unless they know about it, and a lot of times they don't know about it until way after the fact when rumors are going around. Okay? Savannah, is that everything?
That's it from me.
Okay. Commissioners, you have received the administrative reports from the administrative department, planning and zoning, public works and water, sanitation, streets, finance, July building permits, and the police report. Any questions and or comments? Okay? None? Floor is open for public comment.
Mary McPhail, Standard, 118 Shenandoah Terrace, full-time Montry resident and registered voter. Civility and credibility need to be the hallmark of local government. I again share my comment made at the July 10th, 2025 town council meeting. Quote, "The following statement is short and made only after long consideration. It is not given lightly and I invite you to listen. When a sitting member of the Montry Town Council chooses to make an unapologetic phone call to a constituent, and that call, while not profane, was vile and verbally abusive, it is time for that individual to resign. No matter their expertise and hard work, their quick temper and lack of judgments makes them unsuited for leadership. I do not make these statements lightly, and I make them with some degree of distress and sadness. The call is a matter of public record. An email was sent to the individual as well as a written letter. The call was reported to the town manager and to Mayor Helms. We will always have disagreements, that's the nature of town business, but we must always have civility, and civility from the top is key. I stand by this public comment." Credibility like civility is crucial for effective government. The mayor's summary of July 10th, 2025 Town Council posted on the official Town of Montry website and distributed by Town email on July 11th, 2025 was not credible. It reported that, and I quote, "Mary Standard asked the council to dismiss an unnamed town council member for the manner in which he spoke to her in a phone call," unquote. This one sentence, one statement of less than 30 words is inaccurate on multiple points. One, Mary Standard, speaking in the third person, did call for the resignation of the council member that placed a vile and verbally abusive phone call to a constituent. Mary Standard never asked the council to dismiss anyone. Two, Mary Standard never indicated the name or the gender of the council member that placed the call. The mayor's summary indicates that the town council member was a he. Mary Standard never indicated that her statement, during her statement, the name or the gender of the constituent that received the phone call. It is difficult to understand how and why this inaccurate statement was made in the summary, as the video recording was available for review and a written copy of Mary Standard's notes was given to the town clerk at the conclusion of the meeting. Thank you. May I give this to the, statement to the town clerk?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And Mary, there was an error in my communication, and I apologize for that error. As soon as you called and let us know about the error, it was within two hours corrected, and we made sure that the minutes, if you read the minutes from this, from the last meeting that were sent out today, or approved today, that does reflect your complete statement as submitted to the town clerk.
May I reply to your statement?
Well, we're not, no. You know, you said your thing is public comment, I've responded to you. Sure you can, but I'm not going to argue with you, okay?
I don't expect you to do so.
Okay.
But again, I will speak more to that during the second public comment time. Thank you.
Okay. The how, I know we made a mistake, I missed it when I read it and it got published. The why, there is, it's no excuse, it's just it was an error, and we as humans do make errors. Anyone else public comment time? Okay, seeing no one get up? Yes, Leta G?
I just want to say from here to add to what Jeff said. Lock your cars.
Okay. Thank you. Don't leave food in your cars either. We have nothing under old business, under new business, we do have, Savannah, updates on the bank signature card.
Yes, so this is a minor housekeeping change to add our finance officer, Rachel Eddings, to our bank signature cards. We want to make sure that we're aligning with North Carolina general statutes, but also maintaining good separation of duties amongst all of us in the administration staff. So we are just slightly updating our check signing process. Rachel created a flow chart, you can find that on your packet on page 22 that will describe that process, and I'm just going to really briefly review it. So this is how purchases get approved and paid for in town. Angie receives invoices, codes them to the correct account, and enters them into our electronic financial system. Those purchase orders are then sent electronically to Savannah to approve prior to checks being printed. Then Angie prints the checks and matches them up with the purchase orders and the original invoices, those all get stapled together. Angie gives the checks to Rachel to confirm budget information and then to sign the checks. The checks will then be given to the mayor to complete additional oversight and countersign. And then the signed checks with all the accompanying paperwork will be given to Savannah for final oversight and signature, and then returned to Angie for mailing. So this just adds Rachel to our check signing process, and we just want to make sure, again, that we're aligning with both general statutes and good separation of duties. So this will have, have it coming across all of our desks, multiple sets of eyes, and Rachel will be our staff check signer and the mayor will be our countersigner.
Where is the pre-audit stamp or whatever put on?
So Rachel pre-audits purchases before this process begins.
Okay, long as it's there. Any questions, Savannah?
Savannah, where, do you, do you approve the package that Rachel puts together before they're signed?
Yes, so I, I approve the purchase orders initially, so I am confirming that, yes, we can pay this, and that's done electronically. So after she signs them, then I'm looking at them again to make sure that the purchase orders I approve, the checks are printed and everything's correct. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it's just Rachel puts together the whole package, as I understand it, of everything that's supposed to be attached, that's prerequisite to a check being signed.
Well, Angie, Angie really is the one matching the checks with the invoices, and then she's giving the packet to Rachel for her signature. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And Rachel, but currently Rachel's been giving that to you?
Right, so right now, actually Rachel is not really involved in this process. I mean, she is pre-audiating purchases and she approves purchase orders in our electronic system. But right now Angie is putting together the packets, and then they're coming to me for the signature and then to the mayor. So we're actually making it a little bit more complicated, but I think it's a good thing. Yeah.
And all the paperwork is there because when I have questions about it, I can flip through and see where it is, and if I don't know, then I go to Angie and say, Angie, what's this? And usually it's just on new stuff. You know, when I see sanitation pickup and sewer payments to the sewer association and so forth, I can do those, but there's strange ones now due to all the work that's going on. Do we have a motion on this?
I move to add Rachel Eddings as a signer on the checking account.
Commissioner Dasher's made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second from Commissioner Blake. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes carry. Buncombe County, Helene Recovery, Representative Savannah?
Yes, so some of you may remember, we had Rachel Sawyer from the county come out several months ago to talk about the Envision Buncombe survey, which we then included in the Montry Minute and posted on our website several times. So I just wanted to give you an update on the results of that survey and how the town, the town, Buncombe County, and the other municipalities are working together on recovery planning. So Josh, you can go to the next slide. So in the wake of Helene, we are trying to work very closely with Buncombe County, all of our neighboring municipalities, and obviously our federal partners like FEMA, to chart a clear path forward for recovery. We want to have a local recovery plan that is fully aligned with state and federal recovery frameworks and is informed by lessons learned from other communities who have faced similar So this is an effort to unify all of Buncombe County's recovery efforts, and we would like to produce this unified plan, and of course, the Town of Montry will retain independent authority to approve, fund, and carry out our projects, but this is just a comprehensive look at the entire county and how we want to move forward from here. So the plan will include some shared sections such as impact and need assessments, community input on recovery priorities, as well as a section for each local government's projects. So community input, that was the survey that you all took back a couple of months ago, the Envision Buncombe survey. Now we are in the project development area, and I'll just very briefly go over some of the survey results. We didn't have a ton of responses directly from Montry residents, but I'm going to go over the top responses from those who did do the survey. They said that our top areas of focus should be investing in critical infrastructure such as water, roads, bridges, and telecommunications, building more affordable housing, preventing wildfire, preventing wildfires, supporting food security in vulnerable areas, stabilizing landslides, restoring stream banks, preserving flood-prone properties from development, addressing student and youth homelessness, supporting harm reduction and treatment for substance use disorders, and providing trauma-informed mental health first aid style training for our community. So from these priorities, we are going to try to draft some projects that are specific to Montry. So some of this, obviously they're wonderful things to focus on, but they, they don't apply to Montry so much as they do broader Buncombe County, such as building more affordable housing. We don't really have space for that in Montry. Or responding to student or youth homelessness, that's not something that really impacts us here as much. So, but we do have some that stick out that are going to be very important for our recovery, landslide stabilization, restoring stream banks. But I think interestingly, what didn't get touched on in these survey responses that I think are... I think are probably most important to include in this plan are actual other plans, like, and updates that we need to do, like maybe a stormwater ordinance rewrite, really digging in to make sure our stormwater ordinance is as resilient as it needs to be, it's serving the town the way it needs to. I would like to include incident command system training for staff, I know Letta Jean mentioned that earlier. I'm already starting on that, I've, I've taken now four incident command system training classes since Helene has happened. I think it's important for all of our department head level staff to have some level of ICS training. I would like to see an emergency, comprehensive emergency management plan come out of this, which we've already started working on, but that would give us a framework for major disasters. If we were to have something happen like a wildfire, we could pull this book off the shelf and say, this is how we are going to organize ourselves, and this is how we're going to respond. So those are some of the, the draft projects that we have for the Town of Montry to be included in this broader Buncombe plan, and I would love to, you know, hear from any of you or from any of you, if you have ideas, send me an email, it's very much still in the development stage. So the next steps now are we're, we're going to work on these draft plans, get them integrated into this plan. They would like to release a draft of the whole plan for public comment in September, and then, as you can see, it will then be modified based on feedback, and then hopefully I will have the plan before you for adoption in November or December, and then we'll start really implementing these, these projects, and hopefully report back to the community as we accomplish them. So I think it's good, it also is nice to see how all of our other municipalities are thinking about recovery, it's been, these conversations have been helpful to me, so it's been good. We, we've been meeting about twice a month, representatives from all of the municipalities and the county to work on this. So I just wanted to give you a brief overview and update on that, and if you have any wonderful ideas of plans that should be integrated in this plan, I'd like to hear them.
Thank you, Savannah. Any comments or questions of Savannah?
One comment, one question. The question first. I'm not real sure I follow what the value is to this town in terms of us working with the other municipalities within the county and the county on an overall plan, when we are fighting like mad to implement our own plan, and now it just seems to me as if this broadens and maybe even waters down further, both economically and manpower-wise, what we need to do for this community.
So I, I understand that, that concern. I will say that manpower-wise, this really has not taken anyone's time but mine, and I, I think it's valuable in the sense of it keeps us plugged in with, it lets me hear, specifically lets me hear from other people who might have a different perspective on something, or, you know, I didn't really understand the value of something like ICS training until I started having these conversations, and more experienced folks, you know, told me about it, I took the class, and then really, I'm sold on that idea. So, and while they are going to compile it, you know, into a broad plan, it really is Montry specific, our section will be very Montry specific, and Buncombe County is doing the heavy lift on putting it all together. But I really think the value in it is that it, A, it already aligns with what we're doing, so we want to do these things anyway. It's not going to obligate us to do anything special that we wouldn't have, have, hopefully have come to that conclusion anyway. And then secondly, it keeps us plugged in with all of our partners in Buncombe County, and just lets us all benefit from each other's experience and expertise.
Okay, thanks. My comment is that we have just a wealth of new information that we've received from Montryters through the police department survey, with almost 300 respondents, giving lots of input on what they feel is needed from a public safety standpoint, and, and some of that public safety, some of those responses are similar to what you have shown here, and I just would really implore you to work with Jeff and take that information as part of the plan, as part of your planning process.
Yes, we, and we certainly will do that. I think it's great that we had so much participation in that survey, and we want to take advantage of everything we learned.
Thank you, Tom. Savannah?
Savannah, I have a quick comment. I, one of my major concerns is, is fire prevention and fire control. If you've been back in the woods, there's an insane amount of fuel on the ground, and so I'm much more concerned about a wildfire than I am another Helene. I know that the National Forest Service does control burns that are, that they will fund, I think they'll even come back and do a second one potentially, and there may be other funding, other grants that we could potentially apply for. Obviously, we would need to work in conjunction with the MRA. I'm sorry. Oops, sorry. We would need to work in conjunction with the MRA, but that, that is a major concern for Montry, in my opinion, and so I would love to see something done proactively to deal with a lot of the fuel, a lot of the dead trees and limbs that are, that are down in the woods.
I, I completely agree with you, and actually have been speaking with John Coffey, who is the Black Mountain Fire Chief, about what we can do about being proactive about fires. He's got some ideas, and I think that we are going to try to do a pretty big push about public education this fall, and then I'll, I'll see, you know, what his thoughts are on, on doing something, you know, even more proactive, but he has a lot of experience, so I, I trust his, his judgment on something like that, but I'll, I will get with him, for sure.
One thing. Tom, are you going to share those results with us at some point?
Yes, they've just come together today, and I will be meeting with Jeff and Savannah to go over things, and then we'll probably report on it next month.
Okay, good. Back when Bill Forchton scared us to death with his book, One Second After, I started thinking about the fact if something did happen, if we had an emergency in Montry, that I felt responsible, you know, here I am, a councilperson, I need to do something, you know, so I thought, do I rush to the town hall, and then when I get there, what do I do? So I hope that our plans will give everybody an idea of what they can do, because every citizen needs to know how to respond, not just wait for somebody to tell them.
Yes, and I don't know if you saw on the, on the slides earlier, one, one thing that I mentioned was forming a CERT team, which is a Citizen Emergency Response Team, which would essentially be residents who volunteered to help in times of emergency, and they would get some training, they would have some kind of marching orders depending on what the situation is, but I think looking back, that's one lesson that I really took away from Helene is that there is the desire in this community to volunteer and to help, but unless you're, unless you've planned for it already, it's almost impossible to know how to use it. So I hope that that's something that we can put together in the coming months. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, Savannah. Floor's open for public comment. Mary, come on up.
Mary Standard, 118 Shenandoah Terrace, Montry, North Carolina, full-time resident and registered voter. The mayor's summary must be accurate and factual if it is to be considered credible. As noted in tonight's first public comment period, the following statement contained in the mayor's summary of the July 10th, 2025 meeting had multiple inaccuracies, multiple inaccuracies. Mayor Mary Standard asked the council to dismiss an unnamed town council member for the manner in which he spoke to her in a phone call. I met with Commissioner Alexander and Town Manager Parrish on Tuesday, July 15th, asking for a public retraction and, of the inaccurate statement and an apology. The Montry Council was polled by the town manager. She informed me the council decided that there would be no retraction and no apology. Instead, there have been at least three iterations of the mayor's July 10th, 2025 town council meeting written over several days. These were each posted on the official Town of Montry website. Each addition is dated July 11th, 2025, no matter when it was changed. There was never any indication in the heading that it was a new iteration. One iteration was posted prior to the Tuesday meeting with Commissioner Alexander and Town Manager Parrish. Indeed, I spoke with the town clerk immediately after the first incorrect story on that Friday. This may be the change that Mayor Helm spoke of. The iteration that was posted shortly after the first iteration with no notification that it was incorrect stated, quote, "Mary Standard told the council that unnamed, that an unnamed commissioner should resign due to the manner in which the council member spoke to her in a phone call." This statement was still incorrect. The individual receiving the phone call was never named. Furthermore, there was nothing in the body or the heading of the mayor's summary to indicate that any change had been made. After the Tuesday meeting and the decision of the council not to retract or apologize, yet another iteration was posted, again dated July 11th, 2025, again with no correction notice placed in the heading. It now read, quote, "Mary Standard told the council that an unnamed commissioner should resign due to the manner in which the council member spoke to her in a phone call," with the addition of this statement. This statement was corrected to, to reflect the content of Dr. Standard's comment on The council by consensus decided that this was all that was necessary, no retraction, no apology, nothing in the heading to alert the reader about a correction, only a few words hidden deep in the body and still dated July 11th, 2025. We can do better than this. The addition is still incorrect. The constituent receiving the phone call was never identified, and the date of the statement was not 7/11/2025, but was made during the town council meeting of 7/10/2025. Details matter, and getting it right matters when it is posted on the official Town of Montry website. It matters. It matters to me. I made this statement, and I do thank you, Tim, for your apology of tonight, it was unexpected, and I appreciate it. Mistakes can happen. Mistakes can be corrected. Retractions and apologies for phone calls and inaccurate statements can be made. If any of these had happened prior to this meeting and Mayor Helm's apology, there would have been no need for me to speak tonight. Silence was not an option. In closing, I thank you to those present, to those listening by Zoom, or those watching in a future date, and a thank you to the town manager and town clerk for making sure my comments of July 10th, 2025 were accurately reflected in the minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move on. No commissioners' communication?
Can I say one quick thing, Mayor?
Sure you can.
That I forgot to mention during my comments. We are preparing for several small paving projects to begin, weather-dependent, we should see those start next week. So our Public Works Department, you've probably seen them out and about, they're preparing those sites for new asphalt, which is very exciting, so I just wanted to share some good news.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I'd like to thank the town staff also. They, they moved a sign that was sort of hidden on that side of the gate to the front of the gate with the Town Limits sign, which indicates that Montry is a 25, 20 miles an hour community, and it's only, you only can travel in Montry more than 20 miles an hour in limited posted areas, and thank you for making that sign more visible, and I'd like to see more signs, because we are a 20 miles per hour community, and we need to make sure everybody knows that. Having driven through the college on the way here today, I now know we have 100, 200 new cars that have just moved in here, and it's, the sooner we can educate them that we're a 20 mile an hour community, the better. Thank you.
Thank you, and on that note, Chief, I want to thank the police department. It came to my attention this summer that West Virginia coming into Graybeard is, is a blind road, and the, I talked to one of the policemen, and he got with the chief, and they came up with a solution to make that a three-way stop now. Graybeard, you stop before you get to West Virginia, come in either direction. Gives the people coming out of Graybeard, I mean, out of West Virginia, a chance to get on the road before they're wiped out. And I, I can watch all this from my, when I wash dishes, I'm the dishwasher. My wife has an 82-year-old dishwasher that has never broken, but I can watch it, and they are stopping, and there's, there's slow, some of them aren't quite coming to a complete stop, but they're slowing down, Chief, and I do appreciate it. Dates to remember. Okay.
The comment that I was going to make is, I wanted to make sure that you all knew that the town did respond in a great way to the police department survey. There were 292 responses, so thanks to all of you for participating. Lots of good information which we'll, we'll share, and Jeff will be doing something in the future.
Anyone else? Board of Adjustment meets Thursday, the 28th of August, 5:00 p.m. in the town hall. Town hall is closed on September the 1st for Labor Day. Land Care Wednesday, September the 3rd, 9:00 a.m. in town hall. Tree Board Tuesday, September the 9th, 9:00 a.m., town hall. September Town Council Meeting, Thursday, the 11th of September, 2025, 6:00 p.m. in town hall. 5:30, the forum will start. The Board of Adjustment is Thursday, September the 25th, 2025, at 5:00 p.m., and that is tentative. All those meetings are available via Zoom. Do I have a motion to go into closed session?
I move we go into closed session.
All right, that's in accordance with NG, NCGS 143, 318, dot, 11, parentheses, 6, discussion of personnel matter and as amended, a discussion of a, with our attorney concerning a lawsuit. I have a second?
Second.
Have a second from Commissioner Blake. All those in favor signify by saying aye. We stand adjourned, and we will go into closed session, we will be back out when we're through. I don't know that we'll have any announcements to make, but we will reconvene.